Being seven o'clock, I will call the meeting of the Board and Select Board on January 16th, 2024 to order. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge it at this time. Michael Roush is all I see. Note that use of flash photography during Select Board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the following conference line, The Zoom meeting ID is 869-5775-5505, and the password is B-O-U-R-N-E. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. We will start with a moment of silence to recognize our troops and public safety. And a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without a doubt, and just as strong. Before we read the Select Board vision and mission statements, I would like to say that Melissa Ferretti is not here this evening. She was going to try to come by Zoom, but she had surgery earlier today, which was rescheduled from the morning until the afternoon. So I don't know if she'll be able to come, but she is excused and he hopes she feels better. Reading of the Select Board vision and mission statements. Would like to read.
I'll start with the vision if you'd like.
Okay.
Bourne is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community and the amenities that it affords. Bourne embraces excellent education and offers to citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
Thank you. Would like to read the mission.
I'll do it. Bourne will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline and environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and partnerships with others, Bourne will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
Thank you. Next is public comments on non-agenda items. Is there any public comment? On Zoom with public comments. Seeing none. Next is discussion with representatives from Mastot on board rotary improvements. And I'll just let everyone know that we are really only prepared to talk about the board rotary improvements this evening. And we'll have to have another meeting if we have other questions. Thank you.
I think Addie is here from Mastot on Zoom.
Addie, is that you from Mastot? You have our Mastot representatives on Zoom.
Good evening. Yes, I am here. Goodbye. Thank you.
Do you have anything to show us about the board rotary project or what we can expect?
Timelines, anything?
Yeah, I can say that this work is going to be done at night. And about 9:00 AM, the work is proposed to be done at nighttime. There may be some work that may be done during the day, but most of it is going to be done at night. But we're proposing that no impacts will need to traffic. And any requests that will impact traffic will need to be approved by Mast DOT. And it's going to be on a case-by-case basis. And also, the town of Born will be involved during the decision-making process of the TNT for the traffic management process. And secondly, Lawrence Lynch Corp. is going to be the company that's going to be doing option of the proposed improvements. It's proposed to start in spring, depending on the weather, or hopefully March, early March. And the completion of the date right now is proposed for November 8th, 2024. We're hoping to complete this work sometime in the fall of 2024. And Lawrence Lynch is going to be using the traffic control plans that have been included in the project plan set. And this project is merely going to be milling and overlay of the existing roadway. And we will be involving the town of Born as all these operations aspect to begin. So we cannot anticipate any large or full blown detours. Maybe some on local road, but no major detours are in the plan.
Has the scope of this project changed? There was discussion initially about some line painting and changing some of the patterns around the rotary for how people would navigate the rotary. Is that still in the plans for this rotary? We were hoping to see some final plans. We haven't really seen anything since 25% design.
Madam Chair, can I just add to that?
Yeah.
Along with the line painting and the lane proposals, there was never a lot of discussion about signage, and this is a huge problem. Signage creates a direction for people to go. It creates an understanding for people to know which lane they're supposed to be in. There was a very limited projection of signage. And I think the signage goes along with the lanes and the line painting and those types of things. We really have not seen... There was a limited projection of lines, as far as lanes. But there definitely was no projection of signage. And that's been a huge problem with every one of the rotaries in Massachusetts.
Is there someone else? Yeah, if you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, hi. My name is Tom Currier. I'm a Mastot project manager. And I'm here tonight to talk about the rotary project.
Okay. Okay.
It sounds like you already are into the discussion.
A little bit.
Yes, Addie was just starting because we didn't see you there, so we thought she was the presenter.
Yeah, I apologize to Addie and to the committee. I was on the road coming up from Providence, picking up my son. Amtrak was running late, and I don't want to bore you with the details. But anyway, I just got in the house and fired up the computer. I apologize for being tardy.
Welcome.
Well, thank you, yeah. I do want to let you know that there is signing involved with the project. Striping, signings, some minor box widening. The edges are going to be a little better. Almost basically a maintenance project. But the whole intent is for safety improvement to better delight where the vehicles belong, depending on the destination they have. I can tell you that I spoke with our construction division. We are fortunate to have Lawrence Lynch as a factor on this one. I agree with them, as I'm sure you do too. They've done a massive work on the cake. Just finished the Belmont project, which I was involved with a couple years ago. The Belmont Circle project, excuse me, in Bourne.
Yeah.
Which I think came out really well. They are... They're under contract now. They intend to finish, I believe, next spring. Maybe, no, excuse me, the fall of '24. You know, they'll probably get a bulk of the work done before the summer moratorium and then finalize everything in the fall and button it up in November, I think is what they told me. What else can I tell you? All the work will be done at night. It's almost entirely a night work type of project, given the, you know, the intersection we're talking about. There may be some minor, short-term detours to do the entrances of some of the side streets off the circle. Again, they would probably be done at night. But just to do those areas where the side roads meet the circular roadway might require some temporary, short-term detours, like a couple hours, just for pavement to the setup before we can put traffic back on. And that's, I think, everything I could think of that might be, you know, of interest to the committee, unless I'll try to answer any questions you have.
I think Jared has a question, maybe related to Belmont Circle.
Without being harsh, I'm going to jump right in, feet first. The Belmont project was not as successful as you may think it was. The signage was a huge issue. I was here when they first presented, made suggestions to the signage, made suggestion to the crosswalk and the lights for that. I will tell you, it is extremely confusing for the general traffic with the crosswalk lights. When they change from a solid red to a blinking red, there's a ton of confusion. The signage, we suggested larger signs for the speed limit signs. That was never changed. So the speed coming into the crosswalk and into the Belmont Circle is extremely excessive. It creates a lot of problems, as a matter of fact.
Enforcement issue, actually.
No, well...
The sign sizes and placement are all dictated to us by the MTP manual of the federal line that all states have to abide by. We can't just make speed limit signs of arbitrary size. They have to be uniform throughout the state highway, national highway system.
Well, so that was my point. The point is that in the 50 mile an hour zone, the signs are twice the size of the signs as you come to the intersection and to the area where the crosswalk is. So the size of them changes.
You're talking about from Sina Highway into Belmont Circle.
Yes, that's correct. So coming down Sina Highway, the sign size cuts in half.
Can you elaborate on this?
Yes, that's correct. Trust me, I live on the road and I've worked on that road as an enforcement officer for a long time. And it's an extreme problem. And the other thing was, there was a suggestion for signage because of the added lane to the approach of 25495 and the Bourne Bridge. And people coming down Sina Highway are generally weekenders that are looking for direction. And they don't get the direction when they come down Sina Highway before they enter the rotary as to which lane they need to be in. So signage, to me, makes a huge difference when travelers are looking to find out where they're going. So...
Who am I speaking with? I can't...
I'm sorry. This is Jared McDonald. I'm a Select Board member.
Oh, hi, Jared. I haven't received any communication from you on any of this. Please feel free to write me, and we can talk about Belmont, you know, offline.
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
You're here tonight to talk about the Bourne Rotary Project.
I know, but my lead into this is the suggestion that we need better signage. And we need to make sure that folks that are traveling, that are not familiar with the area, understand which lanes they need to be in. And that's the gist of this conversation.
That's part of the project's intention. And as I said before, all the signage, sizes, lettering, color, placement, it's not...
I just want to point those out so that we lean into the right direction as we go into this next project.
Peter, you had a comment?
Thank you.
I'm going to ask the applicant, the guy, did you have a site plan or a final construction document that we can see on the screen that you can share with us?
I don't have that, but I can provide... Doesn't the town have a set of the final plans?
Well, what I'm just thinking is, for the people at home who are watching us on TV, if it was on there, then they couldn't understand what we're talking about. So it's just, you know, we have a large town...
Why don't you put it on the town's website when we send it down to you tomorrow?
So I think what we need is a simplified plan that will help people understand as they come south over the Bourne Bridge, what is the traffic pattern that's being developed? For people are going straight south down 28, people that are going around the rotary...
To Sandwich Road.
To St. Say.
That's what's unclear today, and that's what we're trying to fix with this project.
And I think, and the same thing, when you're coming north on MacArthur Boulevard, how are they going to direct traffic for people that are going down Sandwich Road, people that are going over the bridge, people that are going around to get on Trow Bridge? I think a simplified picture of how the traffic pattern is going to work would be very helpful because, you know, we've done a lot of work now with the Cape Cod bridges, with like sort of simplified drawings where the traffic is going to go around this way. I think it would be very helpful for us to have something like that. So as the Select Board and the public, we could understand what this project is going to do for us because it would be really wonderful.
All right. Well, we'll send you a set of the plans tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Addie will do that. I'm surprised they're not there now. I apologize for not having them down there now.
Well, I think there might be some working, like some bid document plans, but I'm not an engineer and I can't figure out what they say. Okay. Is there anything else from the board? Anything from the public? Michael Roush, if you're going to ask a question, you have to come to the podium.
Oh, sure.
I'm just curious, Tom, you used the word moratorium. Is there going to be a break or a hiatus in the work over the summer?
Correct. We always, on Cape Cod, stop work during the summer months so we don't impact negatively the tourist business on the Cape.
Thank you. The first communications we had, it wasn't clear. We kind of panicked about the summer. We kind of panicked about the summer work.
Yeah.
I think that's...
That would be the worst location on the Cape to do summer work. The absolute worst place.
Yes, I totally agree with you. So one of the things that Addie said was that they were thinking they're going to have some pre-construction meetings. You know, we had pre-construction meetings. Senator Sumurran kind of coordinated before the Bourne Bridge project this fall, and it was really helpful to do that. So...
For bringing that up, that's something I neglected to mention, which I was told about this morning by our construction area engineer, who mentioned that before any of the activities, the big activities, like the milling or the... We're going to mill the circular roadway and the entrances to the side streets. And then repave and obviously we're going to take off the old stripes and put in new striping and pavement markings and signage. And all those big activities like that, we will always have a pre-mediation with the town to warn you in advance what's coming.
Much appreciated.
Yeah, that is very appreciated because we have a lot of schoolchildren that cross the bridge and involved in that rotary for going back and forth. And so that can be a congested time in the morning and in the late afternoon for schools. And it's really helpful if the public safety can be involved and the schools can be involved and what's can be involved at different times. So that would be really great.
You bet. Mastot Construction, District 5 especially, is very good about keeping the communities, you know, informed about what's coming up next.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else from the board?
Good.
All right. Thank you very much for coming in and meeting with us.
I was late.
Okay. Look forward to seeing you again. Thank you.
Bye now. Future.
Okay. Next item is policy workshop. First is process and procedures for acceptance of private ways. We have a draft policy in our package. Who's taking the lead on this?
I will defer to Tim Lighten for the...
Okay. Tim, welcome.
How you doing?
Do you want to just kind of walk a little bit through the sort of like where we're going? So that people, I mean, you know, you have sat with Emery and I, but we need to... I think it would be helpful if you kind of go through it. And even if you kind of use the timeline thing, sort of, because I think the timeline to understand how many steps there are in terms of this would be helpful. So just kind of go through what we're trying to accomplish here, and then we'll...
So we do have a town bylaw for the private road acceptance, and that's kind of how we got here. It's very, I wouldn't say vague, but as far as the process goes, it really doesn't give a lot of direction. So what we set out to do with this private road acceptance and layout policy, we tried to basically, you know, lay it out, the steps for the layman or the resident to get through in order for their roadway to be accepted. What we did is we looked at several road acceptance policies throughout the state. And we felt like we made a good policy for the way this town's bylaw is already created. I'm just going to bring up the timeline. Primarily, in our discussions, we felt it was best that we had buy-in from the residents who are asking to have their road accepted. We do have a requirement in here that requires 100% of the abutters of the roadway layout to sign on for that. So obviously, there's a lot of preamble that the association or the abutters of that roadway would have to go through before they actually applied for a petition with the town. So there's actually a lot of documentation. Basically, you're bringing all of this information to prove that it was built to our standard. You have title ownership. Any easements that are in question, we would be signing off, that we would be taking them. And that process is laid out in the timeline that I provided you. How I work that into the policy is another thing. I kind of wanted to get a little bit of back and forth before we kind of went forward with that. So basically, petitions would be due prior to July 1st to be considered for the following year. So I know that might seem like a lot of time away for anybody that might be hearing this for the first time, but it actually requires a lot of background and a lot of review. And potentially, you know, there could be a betterment involved. There could actually be a little bit more sampling and different types of information that need to be provided to staff. July through August, the engineering department would do a preliminary view of the road and all the documents that were provided to basically say these would be the documents that we'd be bringing forward to the Select Board. We did put a disclaimer there that we were going to accept the first four petitions that are acceptable to go forward. We would probably hold the other ones for future consideration as those other ones would go forward. And then through the end of August, the Select Board would vote their intentions to lay out the road. And at that time, they would refer to the planning board. The planning board usually going through the subdivision control law. They have a lot of background where it comes to the road construction and development with the inspections. So they would give their recommendation a blessing. That would happen in September. In October, the engineering department would develop a preliminary estimate of the betterments to provide to the Select Board. In November, the Select Board would give written notice to the abutters. At that time, we would have our hearing that is a part of the MGL. And by the way, a lot of this policy and a lot of our bylaw that we already have is based off of Mass General Law. Let me cite my laws correctly. I think it's MGL...
4181.
ADA, subsection 24, and MGL 79. That more talks about the taking and the acquiring of land by gift or purchase. But coming in and having that hearing at that time in November, we would really flush out the acceptance process with the buy-in from the abutters. And then we would have the authority to bring it forward. And then by February, we would place an article on the annual town meeting warrant to accept it as a public way. And then in April, we would take a vote for the layout and plan to be filed with the town clerk at least seven days prior to annual town meeting. And then the final estimated betterment cost would be calculated at that time. In May, we have our annual town meeting. We would do three things. We'd vote to accept the road as laid out by the Select Board. And then we would also acquire the land and easements from all abutters by gift, purchase, or eminent domain. And then we would also appropriate the sufficient funds to make any necessary improvements to the road. And we would assess betterments for 100% of those costs. So that's three different votes, I believe, within that. Within 120 days of annual town meeting, the town council would prepare the necessary documentation for the grant or taking of easements to the town and records all documents and plans with the punishable registry of deeds once they've been executed by the Select Board or property owners, depending on who has that responsibility. And then upon completion of any betterments that we would do, any work that we would entail with this taking, the abutters would be billed for their proportional share of the actual cost of accepting and laying out the road. That would be different than the estimated betterments. Much similar to when we do our temporary repairs, we give them a number that we're not allowed to exceed. And then when the actual costs come in, we re-proportion that to the abutters. And then that's where it would be completed.
That's good. Yeah. Thank you. Cheers.
Okay. So the first one, we have an actual list of requirements for our roads and how everything's supposed to be laid out, murrat, drained. Do we have a specific reference? Can we reference something specifically?
Like how, like reference a law?
No, like do we have, all right, this is how our roads have to be. These are the requirements for all... Do we have anything specific or are we just following the...
No, we do. We have a cross-section with our subdivision regulations at the planning board level. It's been the same cross-section since 1979, which is an unusual standard road construction for that. And any road that's been reviewed since 1979 should have met that standard at that time.
So we're sticking with that requirement? We have no additional issues, add-ons, or anything like that?
No, our cross-section is pretty standard. I think once we get into this, maybe the planning board may review that at that time, but that's more their purview.
Right, okay. And so the other thing I have, under 2.0 of the purpose, I think the first sentence and the first word of the second sentence probably can go. The result of how we got to this is not necessarily a part of the purpose.
Yeah.
And then the accordingly obviously goes with that first sentence. So we could probably delete that first section there. Most of it looks great, though. A lot of lovely reading, for those of you who are bored on a Sunday morning. Well-prepared, thank you, as always.
Writing policies aren't the easiest.
Any other questions or comments for the board? I have two things, I think. One, I would like to hear from the Select Board about the 100% versus 75%.
There is a bit of a change.
I'm inclined to say 75% because we've historically seen one person that could hold it up if it's 100% standard. And I'm not... That could create a problem on the administrative side where that one person could then say they didn't want it and do something legal, but I'm...
Or even 80%, you know, you got to leave room for that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I almost said 75 because we've had 75 before, and I'd just like to have a discussion around that.
And that's consistent, too, with a lot of the associations that required, you know, if you require a vote for a change or require, like we did paving project, you know, it was 75%.
I actually wouldn't mind seeing it be a little higher, but you've got to leave room for that 10 percenters, if you will. I agree.
But we'll say 80% of the fronters as opposed to 80% of the property owners because one property owner may own.
Right.
And then someone else may have a small lot, so it's the frontage, it's not the property owner as it is.
Is it?
It's property owner, I think.
I think it says property owner.
Well, that's a good thing. I should clarify.
Yes.
That's my point. That's my point.
A hundred, um, the betterment is assessed by frontage. Linear feet of frontage. However, the, I think it's important that the petition be the number of owners along the way. Because the petition is what opens the door to the town review. We're not expending any staff, you know, we're not reviewing this as a staff until that petition is, comes in and is deemed eligible. And it's always not, it's not always crystal clear how to determine frontage sometimes. And I think at the very first eligibility stage, it needs to be property, lot owners, property owners on the way. Because it can take quite a bit of resources for us to determine who, how the frontage is apportioned. Actually, we've had some recent instances where part of the road was not paved and part of the, or there were corner questions. And the limits of work have not been clearly defined yet. So for betterments, 100%, the betterment is based on your linear feet of frontage. But I would, I would...
How about the number of owners? So if there's, if there's 10 owners...
Right, stick with the number of owners, but...
All right, and if we're going to do the number of owners, we can't have a half an owner, so we should pick a round number.
Well...
But what is the bylaw saying?
More than 75%. So if it, if there's a, you know, if it's 76%, then, you know...
Let me check the bylaw.
I think that if it's, it's more than a certain percentage, then we're a little safer that way.
Well, I just, I want to, if there's a number in the bylaw, I'd want to, at least 75%. If it's 75%, in which case it could be more, but it couldn't be less, so...
Correct, that's... I think the more than is the other part that is going to be beneficial.
Page thirty-nine.
Yeah, it just says 75%. It says to meet 75%.
Is that what the bylaw says?
Select board shall not recommend a town meeting, acceptance of any layout of private way unless 75% of the owners of the abutting property have agreed in writing. So we probably should be consistent with the bylaw.
Yeah, let's keep, yes, let's leave it at 75%.
Seventy-five percent of the owners.
And that allows them to start the process.
That, yes.
That allows them to start the process.
That's, that's what puts it on to staff, which is important, because obviously, there's a lot that goes into this, like you said.
Oh, it's a lot.
That's why there's a long timeframe, and there is a lot that goes into this. And to tie up staff time for that, you need to make sure that you have a majority of the owners on board.
So I think 75% consistent with the bylaw would, is a good way to...
All right, I'll make that comment.
... direction to go, everyone in agreement, that consensus there?
Yes.
Okay, the other thing is, in this, in the petition process, four point one, so we crossed out, or through petition, to the select board, road commissioners by the planning board. I, my question has to do with the process for a new road. Like, so this is, we're thinking old roads that have been around, but my process for new roads. So I'll take Kendall Ray Place. If, whenever that bond is released and Kendall Ray Place is accepted by the planning board, could the planning board then petition the select board to take Kendall Ray Place, to do it? No.
No. So if the road, if the road goes, if a private property owner submits a definitive subdivision plan to the planning board under chapter forty-one, then the planning board approves that definitive subdivision plan. But it, it's at the very beginning. So that was originally, there was an application submitted by a private property owner that may have asked for waivers or, and went through, went through a definitive subdivision hearing and a permit process, permit process. That private developer is responsible to the planning board for the construction of that private way. When the, but the planning board doesn't own anything. The planning board's the regulatory authority. So that, that private way is recorded at the registry, there's a definitive plan on file, the developer builds the road. The planning board's responsibility is to ensure that the construction is, meets the standards. So the planning board does the inspections, or the planning board's agents do the inspections. And at some point, when the road is completely finished, the planning board releases whatever type of surety they have, a covenant, a bond. And at that point, there's no, it's, the planning board is saying this is finished and, and completed and constructed per our standards. But it's still owned by private parties of some sort. So during that process, most of the time, the lots are conveyed out. So they're, they're in private ownership. So the planning board can't, the planning board can't change those people's property rights. Those, those, those owners, whether it's the original developer or lots have been paid out, the individual new homeowners, sometimes the process can take a while. But the, the, under the law, the property owners have to petition. If the town wants to lay out a new road, a new public road, that's a completely, it's not by petition. It's a completely separate process. But the planning board, at the time of definitive subdivision approval, can't bind future property owners and say they have to be taken as a public way.
Can I ask a follow-up, because I'm just trying to understand the process? So the planning board in the subdivision plan can approve a road to be a private road, or they can approve a road to be a public road?
They can only approve a road to be a private way.
So, but when I lived in Southborough, I lived on a road, I was in a new development, new construction. It was, that, that road was going to be turned over to the town. Now, did the developer maintain ownership of the road? And so I didn't have to petition. This was a process between the town and the developer of, of making the road a public road when the construction was complete, and so...
So, and if I may, I think that process is simply just a different process. Before it's subdivided out and sold out, he is, he or she, the, owns all of that property and is able to petition for it to be accepted and then can sell it as an accepted road. If you're selling it under an agreement as previously accepted, it's kind of like selling condominiums where
Yeah.
you sell the condominium and you don't have trash pickup. It's part of the agreement when you purchase, I believe, if I'm correct.
I don't, I mean, I can't really speculate.
Okay. I, I just, it seems to me that there's got to be a way without having all the people, like, you know, I mean,
For new...
And I'm going to use Kendall Ray again, like, all the abutters of, I mean, are all the, the people that build that, are they going to have to petition the town?
Yes.
To, to have it accepted as a public way?
So, I mean, I, I can't speak to your particular experience. I mean, what I could say is that I could, I could see a scenario where it's possible that the developer essentially fronts all the construction costs and builds all the infrastructure, gets it signed off on, and petition, and, you know, does the acceptance. But before lots are conveyed out, that, that's a very, I mean, I could see...
I mean...
A possibility.
But it's too late for Kendall Ray.
It's not real.
And our lots were, were already conveyed out, too, so, and, and it was a weird situation, as the developer went under and then we had to figure out things. But, so, but, but your position is that the planning board is not going to petition on the behalf of the owners. It's got to be the owners.
So if it's, so I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay.
If it was a defunct, if it was a defunct developer, and if the bond, if there was surety, if a bond was taken, that puts you on a different track. But that's a very...
Different track, so we'll, we'll...
A very different...
We'll create a procedure.
And I don't recommend that anybody actually do it that way.
Okay. So, let's continue, though. So the, laying out of a road may be initiated by the select board. So can the select board decide that they want that to be a public road and lay it out?
So you do, your bylaw actually does allow that.
Okay.
It says, so 75% of the owners petition, or the select board shall determine by a four-fifths vote of you that you find a compelling public necessity exists for the acceptance of a particular private way.
Okay.
So if a supermajority of you can make a finding for some reason why it's so critical for, for the public necessity, then the, then the select board can start the process.
We might want to put the four-fifths there in the policy. If it's, you know, laying on a road may be initiated by the select board, road commissioners, by a four-fifths vote of public necessity, or, why, why do we have this by one or more inhabitants of the town born? Or by petition by 75% of the roads, of them, the abutters of a road? Isn't that what we really, we really want to say? Tell me where you... It's four point one, petition process.
First page. Down the first page.
Yep. The laying out of a road may be initiated by the select board slash road commissioners, or by one or more inhabitants of the town born.
I'm not sure, I may have taken that from the MGL.
Well, it could be a petition of inhabit, that's all right, because what they, they in sandwich, uh...
Where are you again?
First page, four point one.
It's, yeah, the very first sentence of four point one.
We could leave that in, it's just that in order for a petition to be okay, for a particular road, it has to have 75% of the abutters, so I'm okay with that.
I'm going to take a look at the MGL, and I'll make a note, just to kind of come back to that the next time we discuss this.
Yeah, can you confirm why it was, why we have that one inhabitant?
It says that in sandwich, too, but then later it says 100% of the road. Okay, so if, we have two ways. We have by petition, or we have by the, the select board, with 75%. The one thing that was a little bit clear, unclear to me reading this, and it's very clear in the timeline, but in the, the steps of the policy, it's not so clear, is when, so we get this petition and it's the signed original approvals, the certified list of abutters, the means or bounds printout, two paper plans, coring and test logs. Okay, and then the engineering department does something, and then the select board notifies the abutter by certified mail of the betterment. Engineering, approval of engineering, and then notify, notice of layout of public meeting. Before the layout of public meeting, we need to have some sort of planning route. We have to decide that step where the select board votes the intention to lay out the road and refers to the planning board, has to be fit in here someplace. Because all the betterments seem to come later, so, or and, and the betterment, so, I guess, I don't know what page it's on, but I guess the, gee, when it comes to the part on the, I don't know what page it is, before four point two, the top of the page, before four point two. There's a lot in here about the engineering department, and I think now that we have this kind of timeline, we just have to kind of break it out a little bit more. So it's a little bit, so we, so we don't miss any steps in sort of the, the policy. And somehow, that planning board review and recommendation needs to be put in there before the notification of the public meeting, because we want that before that notification, I think.
So the preamble on the four point one is in the opening paragraph, I think. And I, I might just be mis, you know, understanding what you're, what you're saying in that regard. We included that at the beginning of the four point one, and then we go into what's required for the petition.
But it does say also that if it's not, if it's not met, it has to go to the planning board.
I'll, I'll review the flow of that, because that is important. And that's one thing I kind of lost sight of, I felt, towards the end, because I'm like in the, we, you know...
Yeah, and, and part of my, yeah, I had a different idea of how the two different, three different ways this could work, there's only two. But somehow, the, the place where the board does, the select board does some sort of preliminary vote, that we're, we're going to consider this layout. And then you do a bunch of stuff, and the planning board reviews it, and then, once you go through all that, then we have some sort of public hearing. And I think that's the way it's laid out in the steps, but I, I'm just not sure it's quite in the policy, so...
Yeah.
But I think that, I think, I agree with Derek that this is, I think we're really getting there, and I, I think that really, it's the 75% was the only thing that I think we just have to stick with and be consistent. So if we take another stab at this, I think we can...
We're pretty close.
Come back and actually have a policy. Any other questions for the board? Any questions for, comments from the public? Ah, please, I'm forced.
Thank you, Suzy Perry from Pocasset Woods Homeowners Association. Thank you. I jumped for joy when someone said 75%. Because 100% is just not going to happen. I think for most associations across the board, there's always one or two people that just aren't going to go there. And so I was going to implore you to have that conversation, and you already did, so thank you. 75% is doable, I think, for people. I mean, I'm speaking on, on behalf of our association, but 100% would just sink us, we just can't get there. So that was a question that I was going to ask, but I think you've already covered that. But I do have a question pertaining to E under the petition documentation. A printout from the tax collector showing that real estate taxes are paid in full through the current date. Is that for the association taxes on their open land, or is that per household? Per, you know, per abutter? I just, and is that only relevant to the betterment process, or is that for everyone petitioning? So I just want to get some clarification there, because again, if you have one person in the development that is behind, it sinks the entire project. So just some clarification, are we talking about the open space that we own, where we pay taxes on that, which we're always up to snuff on? But, or is that per?
Per household.
Per household.
Per property owner.
Yeah, like, would that be, would that then align with the seventy-five percent threshold?
Is this something, is this something we require for temporary repairs? And I don't see it in the sandwich thing, is that a thing?
Yeah, I did see the sandwich one when I, when I downloaded that.
MJ, can you let Tim come back up?
Yes, please.
Um, so that was something we included, 'cause that's something that was, that was included in other policies. You know, I've, I've seen other towns require that to be provided when you apply for a building permit that your taxes are paid. So, that was something I included.
So the question would be then, does it then go to?
The seventy-five percent.
The seventy-five percent of the people signing the petition, should a hundred percent of those people have their taxes paid?
Well, so, yeah, so, that, does that then become a hundred percent of the seventy-five percent?
Or should we even include it, because the betterment process is a betterment process. If you don't pay your betterment and you don't pay your taxes.
It's the same thing.
It's a taking, I mean, there's a process for that, so. I think it doesn't need to be in the policy. I think the select board doesn't need to accept a petition, and if they have concerns about the taxes, unless you wanna make it seventy-five percent.
Yeah, unless you wanna make it.
And I think it's a moving target, like, I had a closing in November where the municipal lien certificate didn't include taxes that had to be paid the next time, and then no one knew they had to be paid the next time, and so I was delinquent on my taxes, I was like, what are you talking about? I mean, so I think it can happen, so I, I'm, I'm not, we can think of, I, I wanna people think about it.
Yeah, I don't see the necessity, 'cause there is a process for.
Yeah.
Interesting, it changes your taxes, and if you're late, you're late, you're already late.
Right.
And it's not gonna change necessarily.
Consensus?
Yeah.
I mean, if you were gonna do it, it would, I would say that it, all of the people that are on board, the seventy-five percent people, if you say that they're all current on their taxes and you wanna do that, I could see that, but.
You don't do it for temporary roads, right, private roads, do you?
No.
No.
Let's take it out.
It's more for license, you know, you have.
Yeah, one property, yeah, you can't get, you can't do this if you don't have them pay your taxes, but for this, I, I would say.
I don't think it should derail the project if you're taking back roads.
There's a lot we're gonna have to do anyways.
Yeah.
Okay, good point. Do you have, do you have more questions, okay? I'll take them one at a time.
Thank you. My, I have two more questions, but this next one is on the acquisition, six oh, if the town will be acquiring the land. So we have rather large swaths of open land, open space, that we wanna keep control over and maintain and continue to pay taxes on it, mow it, 'cause we love it. But I do understand that there are potential easements and whatnot, that you will need to potentially take control over in the event that it did go through. So I wanted to get some clarification on, because the wording in that acquisition part is a little bit murky in that, are you, like, that lead sentences, if the town will be acquiring the land. So is that suggesting that we will be able to maintain our open space and open land, and control over it, pay taxes on it, control all of it?
It's what's in the road layout, right?
Yeah, I.
Where, I'm sorry, where is this? Six point zero.
Six point zero.
It also says, you know, drainage easements, or things like that, so I think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, we're, we're address, it, this is addressing if, if there's a necessity to take portions, or portions are needed for drainage, or those types of things, it's not saying that you have to give up all the property.
Right, so the land, the landing question is the road layout, that's the land that the town would be looking to acquire, it'd be town property. Easements that we'd be looking to take are associated with that road, so that, yeah, drainage easements, things like that.
But understand that the pavement of the road is not the only part of the road, that the road layout has easements, right of ways on both sides, it's usually like ten, ten to fifty, depends on the width of the road, but you, so that's why you have to see the, the road layout, and then what goes with it becomes, it becomes town, it becomes town, go ahead.
Well, to clarify, the road layout is the width of the, the layout, that's usually forty feet wide in the town of Born.
Right.
The width of the road construction is gonna, you know, be variable, usually twenty-two feet wide with a one-foot berm on each side.
Right.
The road is supposed to be in the center line of that, of that way, maybe a sidewalk or whatever, but the layout is the, the forty feet.
So, but there are, this is true of all, all roads, where the pavement isn't the end of the road, there's, there's, the layout is, exceeds out for whatever they might need.
And not just drainage, there could be slope, slope easements, so there's, there's very, you know, various things.
Yeah.
Thank you, that helps clarify. Our concern is that we have really nice open space that sort of enters into the Four Ponds area, and we don't want cars parking there, we don't want that to become any kind of space, so that was our concern about maintaining control and ownership, and that was our concern. Finally, this will be my last question, I promise, in, in the event this policy goes into place here this spring, will you be prepared to take petitions?
I think July first, if we can.
For the following.
Yes.
For the following town meeting, yes, that, that is the goal here. You know, we wanted to do it faster for this town meeting, not gonna happen, as I explained. But, you know, we're gonna, we're, we're working on this to have it ready to go for July first of this year, to be able to go for the next year's town meeting, especially.
And then we'll be able to download the petition from the website, so we can get our seventy-five percent.
Right.
And submit that, and then we have to also, I understand that you'll have to approve core sampling engineering, which we can work with you on, and, um, we'll take care of that and get everything submitted by July first.
Right.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. I got one more point. It's not unusual for associations or residents to come to me to talk that all out, so my door's open, please feel free to come in, and we can, especially if this is already accepted, we can talk it through.
Okay. So are we pretty clear on, like, are you guys pretty clear on what we're kinda working on? I know you have a little bit more work to do, just to, but, that's a sandwich, I think, you can kind of, you know, I think they kind of do it, like, pretty, pretty well.
Pretty well laid out.
Yeah. Okay, awesome. So, um, motion to go to second reading?
So.
Second.
So moved and seconded.
Motion by Jared, second by Peter, to move this policy to second reading. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much, Tim, this was great work, really great work. Oh, yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, all right then. Next item on the agenda is the exciting one. Process and procedures for issuing licenses that are a limited number. There are three things, marijuana establishments and registered marijuana dispensaries, commercial aquaculture licenses, and off-premise liquor. And I wanna start this discussion before we get into the weeds of marijuana discussion. I wanna talk about, and their agriculture, um, policy is, was in our packet, which for a long time, for, it says, in the agriculture, uh, policy, it says that, um, applications are accepted on a first, applicants will be considered on a first-come, first-served basis. It's in the beginning of the policy, section eight point one. So there's been a moratorium for a long time, so there have been no, um, applications accepted. But there is possible that the moratorium could be uplifted, or someone who has a license would turn in that license, or someone who has a license would move out of town, and that license, once they move out of town, is no, is taken away. And I really am concerned that for, um, off-premise alcohol, aquaculture, and marijuana establishments, and marijuana dispensaries, where we have a limited number of licenses, that the process should not be first-come, first-served. I do not wanna get into the market basket thing that happened, where they heard about the license, put in their application, no one else knew, and then people felt it wasn't a fair process. So, before we even go into, like, details of marijuana, I feel that we should take a vote, similar to what we did, like, in the marijuana thing in November, saying we're not ready to take applications yet, just to say that all licenses that are limited in number, including off-premise alcohol, aquaculture, marijuana establishments, shall not be accepted on a first-come, first-served basis, but shall only be accepted after the select board establishes a period of time for applications to be accepted in the process and criteria for evaluation, and votes to start the open application period. The policy will supersede any prior policies that establish first-come, first-served for a limited number of licenses. And I think, I think if we can do that, I would sleep better at night.
Do you wanna name the three, or do you wanna leave it as?
I don't know what else is limited number licenses.
I don't either, but do we wanna?
I said including.
Including.
If we say including, we could say including and not limited to.
Yeah. I think that's a little, little bit more clear, just, it's a little.
Yep.
That's all. Since we don't know.
Right. Is there, how do people feel about this?
I agree, I, I'd like to have all of our processes be fair and equitable. You know, if somebody finds out that something exists, and they're the only one that knows, um, kinda, kinda limits it.
Look for transparency and consistency, at least everybody's on the same page, I have no problem with it.
And I also think that as we, as we start talking about an open application process for marijuana licenses, and we start doing the process, that, um.
Adopt it for other licensing?
That, that, that it can kind of become a template, you, you think we can't do that?
I don't think we can do that for liquor.
MJ, can you read that, um, draft again? I'm gonna put my brain on it for alcohol.
Okay, so, so it shall be the policy of the select board of the town of Born, that all licenses that are limited in number, including, and not, but not limited to, off-premise alcohol, aquaculture, and marijuana establishments, shall not be accepted on a first-come, first-served basis, but shall only be accepted after the select board establishes a period of time for applications to be accepted in the process, the criteria for evaluation, and votes to start the open application period. This period will supersede any prior policies that establish first-come, first-served for a limited number of licenses.
And it's for new licenses, not for transfers?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
Right.
For new available licenses.
Right, yes.
Okay, I think that just needs to be clarified, because a transfer, the.
Yeah, I understand you can transfer, it's a different thing.
Be clarified exactly what, what transaction is, is you're talking about.
Okay.
Okay.
MJ, do you have this written down?
I do.
Okay.
If you look, you know, like we were just talking, say for the agriculture license, if somebody leaves town, they're no longer eligible to have it, so it's kind of removed from them, and opens it, but it's not new.
Available.
It's available.
Well, the other thing about aquaculture is you're under a moratorium.
Right.
So even to reallocate one, you have to lift the moratorium, right now.
Right.
Right now, even one that would, might be reli- licuished, or, or.
I'm just saying, as, as an example.
Right.
You know, in, in theory, you say the moratorium was.
If it's under a moratorium, I think it's a moratorium for new areas, not for.
I don't think so, I think, and I think the issuance of any.
Okay.
I think that a moratorium is on the issuance of any, so to even reissue.
The blanketness of it, the openness of it, is kind of tough, um, you know.
But I think, and, and we, for, for agriculture, and I don't wanna take too much more time on this, but for agriculture, we have to talk to Shore and Harbor about it, because there's a whole process that was developed out. But what I'm saying is, I do, I don't wanna situ, I don't wanna be in a situation again where someone finds out about a license, and we have first-come, first-served, and we don't know anything about it, so.
Can you read that again?
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm gonna read it again, 'cause we have a couple changes now, yeah.
Can I find to see if there's a severability clause there as well, just so I guess in case a portion of it is stricken, saying it's unenforceable, the rest of it is.
It is just a policy, it's not a legal.
Policy.
It's just a policy.
I know, but I'm just saying.
And, and, we'll, we'll have town council review this. I think we voted, subject to town council review. It shall be the policy of the select board of the town of Born, that new available licenses for all licenses that are limited in number, including, but not limited to, off-premise alcohol, aquaculture, and marijuana establishments, should not be accepted on a first-come, first-served basis, but shall only be accepted after the select board establishes a period of time for applications to be accepted, and the process, the criteria for evaluation, open application period. This policy will supersede any prior policies that establish first-come, first-served or limited number of licenses. We have to repeat the new.
Yeah, new licenses.
New, available.
New and/or available, right? 'Cause marijuana are all new, but the moratorium, if someone leaves, then it becomes available, it's an existing.
That's where it's kind of getting hard, is available, or new, or.
New and/or available. Town council might be able to help with the language on that.
Yeah, let's, let's. And, and if there's no concern.
Do you wanna put it to town council review before we vote on it?
Can you not vote the exact word? Can you, can you direct, can you give us this as a draft, and direct us to work with town council to?
Okay.
I don't think we wanna vote on it tonight and have it, I think we wanna have it reviewed.
No definitive vote.
Vote, vote to have it reviewed first.
Yeah.
As long as there is a moratorium in place.
There's a moratorium in place on aquaculture.
That was not given, okay, okay. So, um, submit, I couldn't really have a motion to accept this as a draft policy for you by town council.
So move.
Second.
That was motion by Peter, so can I am or rate, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous, remember it's four. Okay, now, just fun stuff, I, I will scan this and email it to you tonight, so.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, um, the next thing is talking about marijuana. And I sent about a lot of questions, Ian Marie created a lovely PowerPoint. I think, um, we should talk about, um, just, I, I'm kind of interested in what everyone has to say about, like, their research, what they feel. We all seem to be on board with having a competitive process and not a first-come, first-served, so the next question to that is gonna be discussing what our competitive criteria are.
That's the thing, what's the competition?
Right, yeah. So, um, does anyone like to start?
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, so, in, in doing a lot of the research, and attending workshops, and consulting with, um, legal councils in the cannabis industry, I think some of the, the first decision-making, and we just, you know, started doing that process, is, um, the policy decision-making. Started doing that process is the policy decision making. One of the latest cannabis regulations that have just come out evolves around social equity. And, and just give you a little background on that, you know, back in August of 2022. An act relative to equity in the cannabis industry was signed into law aimed at increasing participation by qualifying social equity applicants. For example, economic empowerment status or social equity status, which the cannabis control commission determines that status. Or a minority business enterprise or veterans business enterprise. The other, which is the last two are by the Commonwealth, determined by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The, the other question I had relative to those particular statuses was the indigenous people. I didn't know where they fell, fall in that particular category with social equity. I couldn't find the answer to that, so, but I think that needs to be part of that, that process.
Boston, they list them specifically and a couple of other policies, they list them specifically, so I would add, I would add it.
Okay, that was one of my questions. I was hoping Melissa would be here, but unfortunately she's not well. And then I gave a few samples and I added those at the back of this packet, Salem, Brookline, Newton. There, there are plenty of social equity policies out there that are done very well. And there's certain examples and criteria and language in each of those policies that I'm, I'm sure we don't have a problem creating our own. And then the license policy relative to identifying licenses reserved for specific use. I mean, are we going to have the conversation? We have three licenses available. How does everyone feel about designating one as medicinal and the other two for, you know, retail? And I think that's an important conversation to have.
Are you going to stop? Because if we come to points where we're going to, I'd rather just.
Okay.
Have a discussion before we move on.
Let's talk about that question. I. You guys talk.
You're going to write? Yeah, I think that's. That's a good point and it has been done, done in other communities. They have set a specific amount. Specifically for the medical marijuana, and I'm not opposed to that. I, I think that we only have three. So. Set aside specifically for that, I'm not opposed to that. I think it's actually a good way to set a precedence for our structuring.
I think you got to find that there's going to be little and no interest in a medical marijuana facility. You know, so then if you, if you put one aside for medical and there's no interest, now you've taken an applicant away. That could put their application in and have their own business and you're cutting it away. So why bother taking that? I'd rather have free retail upfront.
So I, did, when Melissa talked to me about, you know, the fact she wasn't coming. One of the things she said is we, we could have always had medical marijuana and no one had any interest. So it's not like they couldn't have done it before. And so I, I don't think I would reserve a license for it. But I would consider giving extra points on the competition. For someone says, I'm willing to provide that service. Because there are people in town who would like to have a medical, medical marijuana. Who would still have to go to a different town if it's not in. So rather than reserve it yet, could we just give like some extra points for our medical marijuana?
Sure, yes, when we determine the competitive criteria basis. I mean, it's like having a grocery store in your own town too.
And I, I think that's important, like Peter said, we, we have to look at this, this is just like any other business coming to the town. It's a business and so we, we want to have the opportunity for the most business and provide equity for every business. So I think, you know, I'm not necessarily opposed to setting one aside, but the bottom line is. Once we've voided and nobody's using that application, we're just kind of defuncting another business. So, you know, preference would probably be a better way to do it, setting a preference. So if somebody does want to have it, then.
In the competitive process.
Sure.
And I will say that one thing I learned in looking, watching, looking at the CCA, the cannabis commission stuff. Is their financial requirements for medical marijuana is probably a big disincentive for a lot of.
It is, yeah.
Because they're very stringent, so.
Yeah.
I think that's good. Okay, so medical marijuana will, will lean towards extra, extra points for preference, you know.
Okay.
Not exclusive.
And then the competitive process, we already talked about it, the policy stating the purpose of that process with the procedure. I mean, we.
Yeah.
You know, as opposed to the first come, first served basis, I mean, we just drafted a little bit of language, which answers some of that, that part of that question that I had.
So I think the point, what becomes the competition is, is the big question.
Yes, well.
What, what gives a benefit, what gives more or less?
What do you mean?
What creates that? What's that benefit? What's the competition part of it?
The competitive process?
What are they going for?
So, so this, right now.
Do I have to wait till discussion generally?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to have our, this is the policy workshop.
I could add a little bit of history on the medical.
Yeah, it's okay. We're, we're, I think we're done with that.
Okay.
Thank you though.
I, it, just so people understand, the policy workshop is the opportunity for the select board to kind of figure out our direction. And we, we will take some comments at the end, but we, we've got a, we have a big job in front of us. And we have to get some direction figured out so that, so that we can, we can start having a draft policy or draft process. And I, I want to move this as quickly forward as I can, so.
That was my intention, sir, where I could have added a point of clarity that I think would have moved it right along.
Okay.
I think the, the idea of competitive process, right? So we have, we have a limited number of, of licenses and what happens in the event that, you know, 10 people are interested in those three licenses.
For a hundred for that matter.
Or a hundred for that matter. So I think that competitive process with some criteria allows for. One, the, the social equity piece that we have to be very transparent and, right? And just for equity in general for all applicants. And something concrete and evaluative for, I mean, we're talking about business that's coming into our community. So what business, what business owner is best suited to.
Right.
To be, you know, to be a part of this community and have a business here, so.
And that's kind of my point. What, what creates the competition? What is the competition? What, what are the allowable components?
Well, that's the criteria piece of it. And if you look on the second page, I think some of the elements like, there's so many out there, right? And Steve, I couldn't open your attachment, but I ended up.
It's in correspondence.
In the correspondence, so I didn't have a chance to take a look at it.
It was a very weird ODT.
It was a weird.
I saved and sent, so it could.
I tried like so many different ways. I sent it to the office, I sent it everywhere, but anyway, so I just got to look at it today.
Interesting because it's hitting on a lot of the points you talked to Steve on.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in, it is in our correspondence.
It is in the correspondence.
Correspondence, people can see it.
So I, yeah, I, I looked at it briefly. So some of the, I think the key things in that criteria moving towards a competitive process would be, you know. Some of the things that I liked in my research was, you know, business plan, neighborhood compatibility plan. Preliminary safety and security plan, community feedback, public support, you know, letters from the community. Outreach, diversity and inclusion. The, the social equity piece, the minority business piece, the veterans piece, residents. You know, and for that resident criteria, how long do you have to be a resident? You know, there's been situations and I've read through some cases where, you know, they established residency for like, you know.
Three years.
A couple of months and then applied for, you know, I'm a resident, I, I get my extra 25 points because I'm now a resident, right? And they're applying, so I think that we might have to, within that, that competitive process, you know.
I think I, that what I've kind of seen, because I, and I did include a couple of different ones, three years. You know, I, I mean, you know.
For residency, yeah, yeah.
I saw five, I saw three, I saw two.
Yeah, it's all over the place, so that's just some of the decision making for that competitive process and the criteria.
That's another points thing. It's not, is it a requirement or is it a point?
Well, I think it's a point thing, right? If we're going to do a competitive process, I think, you know, here's the criteria you have to meet. Well, here's, here's all the criteria listing, right? And then, you know, you can check off resident. That gives you an extra, however many points we decide on points, right? And if you can't check that, you don't get.
You know, here, here are some of the things that we're looking for. Here are some of the things that we're interested in or, you know, because.
Well, I think there should be, in a competitive process, there has to be a scoring piece to it and evaluative scoring piece. So we have that, okay. And I, I had suggested, and we'll look at it later, that whole scoring process, but just moving on, I think.
Well, wait, no, let's not move now because I don't want to just go through this too fast. I want to talk about this. So in the, in our packet, the Cambridge permitting. So in Cambridge and many other communities that establish social equity things. They had priority categories. And you had to be a priority category in order to apply.
Because that was all they were accepting.
It wasn't a points, you didn't get points for this. It was that, it was, you had to be like, and I'll use the Cambridge one. Economic empowerment applicant, social equity applicant who has been a Cambridge resident. At least previous three years. Women in minority on business, attestation to women in minority on business. Confirmation that the cannabis control commission has determined that, I mean, this is too detailed. And then four was Cambridge resident for at least previous three years prior to application. And, you know, earning less than so much of that median income. So do we want to set priority applicants that we're only going to accept from these priority people? Or are we going to just put these as?
Criteria.
As criteria for points.
I think they should be all part of the criteria for points.
You want criteria for points.
I don't know that we want to do like Cambridge said, we're only accepting these.
Okay.
I don't know that we want to be that specific. I mean, Joe Bob could come in and say, I don't fit any of those criteria. I'm just a guy that wants.
To do it.
Right.
Right, and.
He could have a great business plan and could have, you know, the, whatever, you know, he could hit all the benchmarks except for that one.
Right.
And still be eligible.
So, so we're open application is going to be totally points based. We have to be really specific about our criteria, right? Because we have to, we have to public upfront what our criteria is going to be, so not priority.
But at the same time, it's not make us harder than it actually is. You know, when we're doing this process and we're making the criteria, you know, because I don't mean to dumb it down, but we don't have to make something so hard that it's, you know.
Well, I don't think that's the, the point. I think the point is we have to rate them and we have to wait. We have to have a way of distinguishing who our good candidates are.
So we're rating them, we're, we're rating these people that are applying and these particular points or parts of the application.
Right.
Will benefit them.
Yep.
Yeah, because how do you be fair and equitable unless you have some kind of evaluative system where, you know?
It's not, it's not excluding anyone, but we're saying that if you meet some of these criteria or points.
You'll get extra points.
You'll get, you'll get an extra. You'll have a better opportunity of.
Right.
Qualifying.
Right.
We're not saying that you have to have these as a qualification.
No.
We're saying that they're, they're options as part of your.
Right.
Application.
You want to keep going now?
Sure, and then I talked a little bit about the community agreement. Only template I found online was 2019. Have they updated one?
Yes, yes.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I, it's in your packet.
Oh, that is the updated one?
That, that is the draft that was presented.
That's the draft template put out by the cannabis commission. Yeah. And starting March 1st, they have to evaluate that.
Well, they're, they have, it's out to pop.
Or sign off on it?
It's out to public comment.
Yeah.
They're probably going to have an extra meeting in February so they can review it again, so they can finalize that they are, they are. And you can actually go to like two hours and 50 minutes or three hours and 50 minutes into their meeting and watch their discussion on this.
I thought March 1st, it was already set in stone that they were, they were approving HCA's.
Yeah, this is a, this is a draft. This is their draft.
I know the draft, but I'm saying, starting March 1st, I thought they were approving HCA's.
Yeah, but they have to have a template in order to do.
Well, for new, I mean, they have existing, right? I mean, people have existing HCA's and then they're going to, when you renew your licensure or you, right? They have to follow under the new regs now.
Existing HCA's have to be in compliance with the new regs by March 1st.
Right.
Yes, that's why they had to get a template out and a lot of them are like resigning their stuff. And I don't think they're fined until May.
They have 90 days apparently.
Yeah, I think.
The 90 day period of review.
I think they're, I, I think there's, yeah, so they're, they're.
And it's the applicants that's bringing the HCA, right? It's part of your application process. So we're not bringing it to them saying, okay, you approve it and then, you know, give it to the licensee.
Right, well, but.
It's part of their application process.
It's part of the process, yes.
I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure about that because there's things that we have to put in here. In the template, and I'm fine with the template, going to try to reveal on it, but. Authorizations, I don't know if we want to list all those things if we can't, if they can't, we want to probably take that out.
Yep.
They have to be specific about the location.
Right.
And, and there's a choice in here. A specific allocation only or a location compliant with local zoning bylaws and ordinances. So we're going to have to decide in our HCA whether we're for a specific location, and that's what I would say.
Well, it has to fall in the overly district anyway.
Right.
Right, but.
Were you saying even more specific?
This is, this is the choice they give you in the template, either a specified location only. Or slash location compliant with local zoning bylaws ordinances.
So you're saying if we tell them, they, when they come in with this, it should have the specific location?
Yes.
Because then that gives us the option to say, mm, no. But if you say a location within zoning, then it could be anywhere that meets the requirements within zoning. If you specify it.
Because then, then they have a section if you move.
But isn't that contradictory? I mean, we already, we already voted.
For the zoning.
For the zoning.
But it's subject to special permit.
Only certain overly districts, not all of them.
Site plan approval, so.
Right.
Do we need to have that extra?
Most, but mo, I mean, I think they want the host community agreement, the template, they want the host community agreement to state. Whether it's a specified location or whether it's within the zoning. Personally, I would say we do a special, a special location, a specific location.
Okay.
There's a piece in the state HCA about that.
Yeah, that's what I'm reading.
That's what we're looking at.
Okay, you have to have a specific site to get an HCA.
Right, you have to have a location.
In order for them to approve it.
With.
Site control, like you have to have a lease in, hand and everything.
So I don't know what this slash means, is that it's a specified location. This is what the new HCA says, especially a location only or location compliant with local zones regulations and by ordinances. So I think what that means is if you have a host community fee agreement. Where the community says you can put your place any place where it's zoned. Then what you do with the cannabis commission is something different. They might require a specified location, but I'm not sure that the host community fee does anymore.
Well, it's already in there though, so.
I just put, let's just say specified location.
Yeah, they're already managing it, so.
Okay.
Then there's this compliance section, then annual payment responsibilities. They've, you know, nobody's going to get community impact fees anymore because they've made it odorous, so.
They've made it so restrictive, yeah.
If there was something, it's a lot of documentation and it has to be very specific to that business only, not applies to anybody else. So you just leave in there wording and it, that's fine.
Yeah, I think we just leave it the way it is.
And then. The thing that we do have to talk about is. We have to, section of this where generally occurring fees.
Yeah.
Where we have to be specific about fees that they're going to have. That could be like.
Sewer, water connection, waste collection.
Property taxes, personal property taxes. We have to list all that stuff. If we're going to have business. License fees, like is there, is there? If we're going to have business license fees, like, is they, is they get a business license, is it application fee? So, you have the application fee, then there's a business license fee. Is there an annual business license fee? Are there any other fees? So, we're going to have to be, get some direction from staff on all those fees that we might charge, that has to go. We have to specify that in the HCA, so that it's, there's no surprises.
And I, I think that's one of the reasons why you have to specify an exact address.
Location, yeah. Okay.
Because if it's a sewered property, it's going to be, our list is going to be different than if it's a non-sewered property.
So, I'm pretty, I'm, I'm fine with the HCA for a specified address, a specified location and using the template, because I, I don't want to spend a lot of legal fees on HCA's. I mean, like, yeah, it is what it is, so.
Well, and they've changed so much, so it's just very different.
So, the thing that we're, kind of, is put in our personal, like, our municipality emails and our, our fees. We do need to get a recommendation from staff about what the application fee was, what the business fee is. And.
So.
How, how are other fees calculated when we look at other permitting fees and things like that? Is that, do they incorporate what resources we expend for those, processing those fees? I mean.
So, application fees are different. And there's, there's still a lot of discussion about how to, how to determine an application fee. The generally occurring fees are, are not one ti, my understanding is those are not one-time. Whereas an application fee is one-time.
One-time.
So, that's, that's a little bit different, and that's something that we have to take a, we need more time to look at.
Yeah, I don't expect any answer for that, that's, yeah, I don't expect that, yeah. The application fee, and then, I did notice in a couple places where you have an application fee, and then you have a business, once you are approved, you get a business license fee, a marijuana license fee. And so, what those, both of those need to be kind of figured, to be, to fall in the correct part. You know, not too onerous, but covering the costs that we have and the, the things that we have to do. So, yeah, so, we're, they're, having that HCA thing came out before this was good.
Okay.
And it's in your packet.
Yeah.
That is the draft from their, their meeting that they reviewed, yep.
Because the one I had was integrated, 2019.
Yeah.
And then just a, just looking, one of the questions was, what do you foresee the application process looking like? So, I, I looked at it more of like a phased approach. Initial review, that the initial application name, you know, general information and paperwork. And then, if the evaluation and scoring of all the applicants. Creating this eligibility list of, you know, I put in 80% to reach that final selection process, but if, if you only want people who score, I, I don't know, right? And then the final selection, and again, who, who should be involved in this process and make a recommendation to the select board? And, and do we allow for a, an appeal process? Because, you know, once we open it up to a competitive process, should we allow for an appeal process or an appeal time? I don't know. That was one of the questions that came to mind when I started thinking about having a competitive process. Right. The people who selected you, I don't know, the, the.
People that didn't select you.
The people that didn't select you. Oh, we, we don't have an appeal process, right?
I don't, I don't, I haven't seen an appeal, and I looked at like some of the ones that, you know, Brookline and stuff, I don't think.
It's just a question that came to mind because it's a competitive process, so. Would someone appeal? Would there be an issue with appeal, and, you know, someone appealing and not being happy with? But I think, I think the way we set up the competitive process would lend itself to having a pretty definitive.
Yes.
Answer, right, a definitive selection of people.
So, I, there's, I put in like the Cambridge process and the Newton process.
Yeah, I looked at that one.
The Cambridge process, I like, except for, I couldn't find Concord, I don't know if you found it. The Cambridge process, I kind of liked, it's very detailed. And I'm just putting these in here as like templates. I'm not into like reinventing the wheel, like, take the sandwich road process and like reinvent it. The thing about the Cambridge is that approval two and approval three have to be switched, because our zoning bylaw states they must have an HCA to go to the planning board. So, they do not go to the planning board for it, they go to us first. And, the, the, their process, you know, you kind of, they get the application, and in the application process, there's a lot of things that are like, where are you located? What's your security plan? What's your this plan? What's your that plan? There's all these things that you have to put in there. And that, to me, that initial review is a staff review. It's kind of like when we get an application for an event or an application for any kind of permit. It goes through the staff, kind of, you know, they check the, what's the police department saying about safety? What's these people say about that? That that, that, that review goes through staff. Have they paid their ta, their business taxes? You know, do they, you know, have they done what they need, you know, whatever those particular things are? And then, once that packet is like, is like approved, maybe, I don't know if they have a scoring thing too, that staff, based on the criteria that they review, or just a recommendation, just a recommendation, as Marlene said, just a recommendation. This is a suitable applicant, and then we get it, and then do our evaluation and scoring.
Yeah, that's what I mean by the phase one.
And then it goes, then it go, so phase one is the staff review of the, of the, whatever criteria we set for, they have to meet. Phase two is evaluation and scoring based on our stuff. And then, then it goes to the planning board to, for their. So, evaluation, scoring, you have your eligibility, final selection for an HCA. Then we do the HCA with them, but it has to be contingent on approval of the planning board of their location, you know, site plan, special permit approval. And then after the planning board's site plan, just a special permit approval, comes back to us for the, you know, final.
Final.
HCA.
Final approval, yeah.
But I think this, and Newton, I had Newton too.
I had, I looked at Newton.
And Newton, you know, they have an application. A lot of these applications are online applications, which I hate going into an online application and not having a paper one that you can look at, but, first. But the, the Newton application was a pretty good example of the requirements, security, public health, community relations. They're just supposed to talk about, like, how they're addressing these things, sustainability, equity, economic value. And these are all things that they have to talk to the Cannabis Control Commission about, or already have, so it's just telling us as well. Site map, document format. So, is, is this application something that we would want to put in our online clear view thing? Yep, so we'll set it up in the, in that process that we do for building permits and everything else. Okay, that's good. So, I know, the Ca, the Cambridge process was pretty good, but it was switched around. The Newton process, Newton had this advisory group thing, which I, I don't think we need an advisory group. I think we just want staff to do review of like.
Initial.
That, that stuff. Some of these other things in terms of community relations, experience, sustainability, equity, economic value and context, those are be our rating criteria for evaluations, along with, you know, minority resident, right?
Yep.
Yep.
The only other road that I'm not sure that we have to travel down is the disproportionately disadvantaged. Our, our community is not identified by, you know, the Cannabis Commission as disproportionately disadvantaged or disproportionately impacted community. But what happens when we have someone who is, who, one of the applicants? Because that process is, is definitely a little, a little different than, than a traditional application process. We have to provide a whole lot of more technical support, there's suggests about waiving fees, and so. I don't, I don't know the answer to that, and I don't know what our obligation is to, for that type of outreach? Because we're not identified as a, as a.
I don't think we have to do it.
I, I know, so, see, I think there's some, the little bit of a vague. I, we don't have to do it because we're not one of those 30 communities? But I think there is what happens when we have someone who's disproportionately disadvantaged, identified as disproportionately disadvantaged. Do they fall under the social equity?
I mean, I, so some of the, some of the people, I think, waive fees.
They do, but according to the cannabis, we have to like provide tech support, the whole process, like, we have to do a lot of hand-holding, according to some of the language that, that's where it got a little cloudy for me. And maybe we need to consult with, you know.
Maybe we should ask our town council on what our obligation is.
What our obligation is.
Providing that, that's something, that's a legal question.
Yeah.
If he tells us that we have to do something, then we have to do it, but I don't, I don't.
Because they have to have different, they're, they fall under different criteria too, with respects to like.
Well, that's when you read the Boston thing, they do a lot of that stuff, but they're Boston.
But they were identified too as a disproportionately impacted community, yeah.
Yeah, so, so a question for town council, if we're not identified as a disproportionately.
Impacted.
Impacted community, are we required to provide any support? That's a question for town council.
That was the only other. And then, and then the next steps, right? So.
Yeah.
Do we? Establish, do we give the directive to the town administrator to, I mean, how?
I don't know. First, I want to ask Marlene and Liz, do you, has this discussion given you clarification on some of the directions of the things that we wanted to do? In terms of this policy and procedure? Do you have questions for us?
It has given us a starting point. I, and yes, we will definitely have questions along the way as we start putting the pieces together.
So, one of the, do you guys have anything else to add to thoughts about? Where we go?
My biggest thing was the, the competition piece of it.
Yeah.
You know, putting those, putting those things in there and we have to come up with a point system, a designation for each one, or, you know. I think that's going to be a little tough, not so much tough, but that's going to take a little time to kind of put that all together. So, that was kind of one of my biggest things, is, you know, that competition piece and all the pieces of that. But I think we're, we're in the right direction.
Talked about a lot of different criteria. So, I think, once we develop the criteria that we want to give points for, it's easier to work from that to develop the point system.
Right.
You know, because I think you need to kind of list out all your criteria before.
Yeah, and, and they're not, you know, I'm just trying to find a better word than criteria, because you don't have to have it. You know, like, criteria might suggest that you need one of those, but you don't need one of those. If you're, if we only have three applicants and Joe Bob doesn't have any of those, he's still going to kind of get his life, you know.
Well, he may or may not.
He may or may not.
He's still going to be eligible, though, is what I'm saying, yeah. So, that's that equity piece, you know, that's that equity piece. He's still going to be able to come in and file his application, even, even if he doesn't.
And he's still going to go through the process. And that's the fair equity piece of it and the transparent piece of it.
I'm just saying, those, those pieces, we're not saying that you have to have them, but they're, they're steps that are going to, they're pieces that are going to help you get.
They're criteria, and if you fit, or you do a good job, if we evaluate, you hire for those criteria.
If you fill that criteria.
Yeah.
It's no different than, you know, you get 20 applicants for a town administrator's position. How do you evaluate and set a standard and, and set specific, you know, points, like we did when we were hiring the new superintendent? I mean, you have to, you have to have some quantitative.
Way, yeah, you have to have a quantitative way, yeah.
Data, along with qualitative data to, for the decision-making process. Because again, it's, it's who best fits.
The town of Born.
The town of Born, or the, the business that, you know, they're establishing in the community and, and what fits the community and, you know.
And again, you know, like I said.
And not only that, you know, I mean, we have a local comprehensive plan, we have, you know, we have, we have a, a vision for our community and it, and.
In the end, it's a business, though. You know, we're bringing business into the.
Right, yeah, at the end of the day, it's a business and.
So, I mean, I think that, my, I think is that, you know, these are the things we're going to evaluate, we have to be able to explain them. I think there's examples from Cambridge and Newton and probably others.
Yes.
Where we can kind of, I think we want to split out.
Cambridge and Newton.
Some of the things that are staffed, which are safety, security, traffic. I mean, if there is things that the, the staff in the departments are going to look at, those are part of the recommendation, they're not really part of the evaluation. They're, in order, they're, they're going to be recommended based on those things. If they're, if they're not recommended, then maybe that's minus points or something, you know, you know, and, or however we decide to deal with it. So, on your question, do you have anything else to add here?
No, I remember Marie said what I was going to say at the end, so.
So, you know, sometimes we send this stuff back to the policy subcommittee to work with staff on it. It has been suggested that a, one possibility, which that would be Amory and myself. The other possibility, another possibility is for Melissa and Amory to work on it, because they're kind of on opposite sides. They're like, we have the very conservative, like, person and that, like, let's just give it to everybody person. So, that, that's another way of doing it. They can work on consensus on things, then, then it's going to be a good consensus. If there's things that they can't come to agreement on, they can come back to the board. And the board can kind of say, well, what do we think about this and, and figure it out.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I think Paula should go to policy sub.
What?
Policy should go to policy sub, don't you think?
Yeah, but I, I, I think in this.
It doesn't mean, well.
I think, honestly, I think it's hard to have this conversation without Melissa here.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, I don't know that, I don't know that we.
Or do we work in consultation with the town administrator, like Melissa and I?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So, I.
We'll wait for Melissa.
I think you have to have Melissa involved.
So, so, all right, so for now, it goes to policy sub, and she wants to come to a policy subcommittee, she can.
I think there's some definitives of policies that, that we need to have, right?
Yeah.
And that's the thing that I was going to bring up, if Melissa wants to be involved in. We all agree that, that, that there's nothing wrong with that, so I don't think there's any objection to it, but it's a posted meeting, she can go and she can be a part of it.
Actually, that would be a quorum.
For what?
If it's posted, if it's posted, though.
It's not posted as a select board meeting.
Well.
Oh, you're talking about the conference?
Okay.
Is that what you're talking about?
No, no.
No, if she comes to the policy sub.
We're talking about having a court.
Oh, oh.
So, this is what we could do, this is what we could do. We could refer to policy subcommittee. If Melissa wants to get involved, we can post all the meetings as select board meetings, and then anybody could come.
That's kind of where I'm going with it, if, as long as it's posted.
I really.
Let's just wait for Melissa.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's just.
I'm hesitant to post select board meetings that are not, that are intentionally not for meetings.
Yeah, it's one agenda item. Yeah, it's one agenda item.
And when it goes to policy sub, and it's gonna come back to us.
Yeah.
She's gonna be able to be involved. So.
Right, but I think the other piece of it is, is the, setting the, like, criteria and the application process and working in consultation with the TA. That's, I'm, I, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the, that's the piece of it that you want at least two people.
Right, and I do, I, I mean, I'm fine with doing it, and under policy sub, we, we meet regularly, and we can do it. I was just offering an alternative, because, so, she has a different point of view, so, well.
I, I think there is, I think this is a little bit different, and there, at least, it's appeared in the past that there's a pretty wide spectrum on the board. And I would say Melissa and Emery are at the ends of the spectrum.
Both ends, if you will.
Um, so, I think, I, I just, I think there is value. I think there's value of working with kind of the people at the ends of the spectrum to come to the agreement, rather than maybe not capturing one end of the spectrum. It, I don't want the policy subcommittee to do a lot of work, and, I mean, I think it's, I think already, you know, already we've, we don't have our input already on this piece of it, on what we've already discussed.
Right.
So, um, and she's expressed, she's, she has expressed fairly strong opinions.
So, rather than put this to the policy subcommittee, we could ask the town administrator to use the feedback from this workshop. Um, and to set up, um, a group of who she deems appropriate to advise her on this, is a, this is like, this is like.
Administrator Advisory Committee.
Yeah, you can set up a, like, you know.
Yeah, not a subcommittee where you have to post public meetings.
We'll put it on next Tuesday's meeting, we'll talk about it next Tuesday.
Yeah, I don't want to create another.
Okay.
I don't want to, I don't want a town administrators advisory committee, that's.
Okay, all right.
It should be the, it should be policy dri- it should be policy driven by the select board in some fashion.
Okay, is, would it, would it be a new subcommittee for the purpose of developing marijuana policy, if it's?
I think.
Those two people?
Yes.
And then it would be posted open meetings of that new subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll talk about that next Tuesday, so Melissa can be a part of that discussion. Okay, sounds good. Is there any comment from the public? Just, I want to eliminate it a little bit, cause it's, the weather's gonna be bad, you know, there's gonna be lots of, lots of time.
There'll be, yeah.
I'll, I'll try to be quick, and, and thank you, Madam Chair, Steve Strohny, Monument Beach. Um, yep, folks, I did, uh, email you, um, some suggestions about the host community process, uh, because I've been involved in this, uh, industry now for both four or five years, so I've seen the evolution of the industry, and I've seen the mistakes that other communities have made. And, um, what I've always been very proud of, uh, in Born, is that we sort of do things our own way, the right way, we are not dictated to by, uh, other communities. But in any case, um, what I did send to you was, um, some suggestions, uh, about the matrix to use. And, uh, the social equity component, the state has, has said to us, we want you to put an emphasis on that. The problem historically with the social equity is two things happen. You either don't get a social equity candidate, or you get a candidate who gets the, the license, but then doesn't have the business acumen, the resources, the millions of dollars it takes to get these businesses up and running. So, those licenses end up going, uh, they're just languishing. In, in some communities, these licenses have been on the books for four or five years, and the businesses aren't even open. Uh, you can't go to a bank and get a million dollars to do this, it's not, uh, they won't lend you the money. So, what I've, uh, suggested is that if we get a social equity candidate, certainly they deserve some points, if you will, Madam Chair, to use your language. But if they're not technically, uh, one of the recognized social equity categories or programs that the state puts out, then I think that the next best thing is to look at the ownership of it. The state has said, we want minorities, we want women, we want veterans. So, if an ownership group comes to you, and they check off a lot of those boxes, then I think they deserve credit for that. Um, the other thing is, some of you know that I was, uh, involved in the local comprehensive, uh, plan, I, I was on the committee that wrote that. Um, we had over a thousand people in the town of Born weigh in on the LCP, and the LCP is a vision for the town, and we got all demographics, uh, we went to the school, we used the school department's database, and we got people in their twenties, thirties, forties, fifties, sixties, seventies, eighties, uh, to respond to our survey. So, the LCP really is a cross-section of the town and the vision for the town. So, I, I'd really like to see that incorporated in the process. Um, local ownership, local ownership, the, 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 the state has emphasized local ownership, it keeps dollars in the community, local owners hire local people. One of the emphasis the state just came out with the other day is, uh, hiring local employees and having good employment packages. So, certainly, I'm, I'm hoping that's part of the criteria, too. And probably one of the most important things is, the town gets a percentage of these sales, three percent, right? And that's gonna be a lot, a lot of money coming into this town, and, and I think we need it. Um, so it's really important to have a candidate that has a business plan and the expertise to make this happen. This is a very highly regulated industry, it's not for the faint of heart, it's for people that have a plan and the resources to do it. So, I, I think that was part of the issue the last few years, is people got licenses, they didn't have any money to open up, they didn't have the business acumen or the expertise to do it, and, uh, a lot of those people just haven't, it hasn't worked out for them. Uh, as far as, two last points, uh, as far as using the standardized HCA, uh, I think that's a terrific idea, because what's gonna happen in there is, cities and towns, uh, are gonna get sued by operators and vice versa, and these host community agreements are gonna go to the courts. Well, if the same host community agreement goes to the court, time after time after time, what happens over a period of time is you get established law, okay? Now, what happens is Born wants to get, you know, do something a little different, wants to put a little tweak here and there. Now, when that HCA goes to court, we don't know what's gonna happen. So, I, I really like the idea of the standardized HCA, and I've read through it, and it seems like a, a pretty fair document. Uh, last point is, uh, I, I, I noticed in the package, there's Cambridge and Newton, uh, have, uh, a number of items in there. Well, Cambridge got sued and had to return a lot of money, uh, to their operators, because they didn't do a lot of things right, and the same thing with Newton. So, um, the, the cautionary tale in, in that regard is, let's not just follow what every other community did, let's kind of do it, as I like to say, the Born way, the, I, I also say the right way. But, um, so, I think everything I've heard tonight, absolutely everything, uh, has been encouraging to me, because it seems like you guys are right on point on this, and, and there's a clear path forward. Um, some of the things you said, Emery brought up the LCP, that made me, that warmed my heart, and you brought up the superintendent search, I was on that committee, I was the chairman of that committee, thirty members, Peter, you were on that as well. M G, I'm not sure if you.
Yeah, I mean, you sit sat next to me.
But we had a scoring, uh, process, and we narrowed it down to finalists, and, and as you say, you have to have some sort of quantitative, uh, criteria. You can't just go off gut or subjective factors, and, and we did an excellent job, and that process worked great. Um, so, there are some similarities there. Thank you very much for your time and attention, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, I'll keep this very brief.
No, I try to end at nine, so.
Thirty, ten seconds.
Edward Dow, Buzzards Bay, um, and I'd like to echo a lot of exactly what Steve said, um, and just a couple of points that I heard, uh, the board make along the way. Uh, Mr. Meyer, you said, uh, not to dumb down the process, but that's exactly what Born should, should sort of do, they should, uh, to, to echo Steve's sentiment. Uh, I've been involved in a number of these towns and HCAs, some successful, some not, a lot of them embroiled in lawsuits now. Uh, the ones that Steve mentioned, Newton, Cambridge, New Bedford, you could look into that one.
Pittsfield.
Pittsfield, all of them, all of them that tried to overcomplicate it, all ended up in lawsuits. I, I, I see, I'm involved with a, a few of them, not directly suing any town, um, just for clarity, no, so, um, so I've seen it all. Um, Dartmouth was a pretty straightforward one that was decent. Um, they tried to prioritize medical, uh, heavily, they did not end up getting any medical license applicants. Uh, I personally had a medical license for about a year, I gave it up, cause it did not cover its own bills, uh, just food for thought. Um, but I think if you make it smooth and easy, and put the control in your board's hands and the planning board, I think Born's in a much better position.
Yeah.
Oh, and we have to use the template HCA, Steve, just as a point of clarification. So, that, that's been challenged in law, in, in lawsuits a number of times, so I think that's a foregone conclusion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, are we done?
Yeah.
Does Kevin or Laurie have anything?
Ten o'clock.
Okay.
Twenty-five seconds past nine.
This was a very preliminary discussion, and there were some things that we just wanted, I really wanted to eliminate some of the questions, to make sure that we're focusing on what we want to do to get it going as soon as we can, and not too complex, so.
I think the important part is, a lot of this is already available.
Right.
It's, it's there for a reason.
That's good, okay, um, we've already discussed the commercial and aquaculture licenses and off-premise liquor, because we kind of did that as part of that. No minutes, um, future agenda items, we have a couple of things coming up, and I don't know. Um, any committee reports?
CTEC is back on track, um, they are hoping maybe February, um, to do a presentation. They're looking for maybe like fifteen, twenty minutes, they've put together a slideshow, they've been putting together a PowerPoint presentation and highlighting what they've done so far, and, um, what direction they're, they're moving in.
Okay, you know, um, I'm gonna go back to future agenda items. So, um, we're scheduled for the select board on February thirteenth and twentieth.
Yes.
And for sewer commissioners on.
Thirty.
But the February twenty-seventh.
Yep.
But I'm not gonna do it now, but I want to think about whether, with all the policy stuff we go, have going on, whether we need to do another policy workshop, or maybe on that meeting, whatever it is in February, that we don't have one, but try to maybe limit it to an hour. But we've got all these things, we've got the private, private roads, curbside, marijuana, I mean, if we don't have, set aside time for this. So, we can talk about it again next week, but I'll think about that for that.
And I know we have some final decisions, we should be coming up with some of the policies.
Cause some of this stuff, if, if it waits too long, you just lose it.
Yeah.
I will. February sixth, maybe?
It is February sixth. I do have, uh, tentatively scheduled for next week, the twenty-third, the third reading of the curbside collection.
Okay.
The policy subcommittee will be talking about that.
Okay.
Thursday, so we should, I, it's, I've got it back from council, there's some very minor changes.
What about use of town policy, town property policy?
Uh, we're not even close, we don't even have that. So, I'm just bringing out the.
I think we'll be able to take, I think we'll be able to take curbside collection off the list.
And I'm just like, thinking, I just want to give people notice that we may end up having to have a meeting on February sixth, because I feel like there's so many things that people.
I may have to do it remotely, just, just, you know.
Oh, is it, okay, that's fine, all right, it's not definite yet, anyway, um, all right, any other committee reports? Correspondents?
Correspondence of January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. A, letter referencing Born Fire Department's one-hundredth anniversary. B, K Spillhouse Talent Bank Forum for Historical Commission. C, Upper Cape Tech Budget Meeting Minutes of ten thirty, twenty twenty-three. D, Waterways Application, seventy-four South Road. E, Strohny Email Host Community Agreement Process. F, CTEC Resignations, Catherine Walton. G, Notice of Board of Health Watershed Permit Meeting to Vote. H, Department of Public Utilities Energy Burden NOI. I, Cape Commission Reporter, December twenty twenty-third edition, uh, December twenty twenty-three edition. J, Email from Agansic Squitig Association Requesting Dredging Meeting. And K, Constable Application, R Coletti.
Can we have the staff send out a form letter to Ca- and out to Catherine Walton, saying thank you for her time?
Mm-hmm. And actually, I think for future agenda items, could we move future agenda items till after correspondence? Because if we see something in correspondence that we'd like to have a future agenda item, then we, it, it, I think it just flows a little bit better.
Right.
And I think about that, because I think at our last meeting, there was the community voting people, that we need to have them come in.
Um, yeah, and I think we have them on for the thirteenth, or we're, we're trying to confirm the thirteenth.
Okay, and, um, um, we should have a discussion about, uh, fire department.
Anniversary.
And a hundredth anniversary, I mean, they want to come in and talk to us at some point, just about what they're, they said they have some experience, I don't know what they need from, or what they want a committee to do before we set up a committee, so. Okay, uh, so far, we'll stick with the meetings that we have, and that's it, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
And Marie, is there a second?
Second.
Chair. Any further discussion, or in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstentions, and signatures?